Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission Special Meeting. Meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6, and ATT U-verse, Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed on high-definition on the city's webpage at glendaleca.gov/live or on YouTube at youtube.com/mikeglendale. We have our roll call.
Of course. Commissioners Alkasars absent. Amirian?
Here.
Arakalian?
Here.
Rostomian?
Here.
Ex-officio Commissioners Garabedian?
Here.
Zarukian?
Here.
And President Sardarabegan?
Here.
Next side?
Next item?
It's the report of recording clerk. The agenda for October 22 regular meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside City Hall on or before Tuesday, October 21, 2025. At 2:00, we have introductions and presentations. 2A, introduction of new student commissioners Vera Garabedian and Eric Zarukian.
I would like to hand that over to our commissioners, who actually had the pleasure of interviewing them and had made an excellent selection of our students.
Yes, Commissioner Rostomian and I had the pleasure of interviewing just a bevy of very qualified candidates for this position. And the two that we ended up choosing were not only qualified, but extraordinarily qualified. And that's Vera Garabedian and Eric Zarukian. They acquitted themselves extremely well during their interviews, and we're looking forward to getting their unique insights for our commission. And I'd love for Commissioner Rostomian, if she has anything to add, to add that before we turn it over to them for their inaugural meeting statements.
And song.
The only thing I would use so perfectly and eloquently described our process and our selection and our choices. One thing I would like to add is that I encourage both Eric and Vera to be their most authentic selves. Your brilliance has shown through your resumes and through your interview process as well. I wish you a very happy experience, as well as very educational and informative. And I look forward to hearing your introspective and also your opinions on how we go move forward for the city of Glendale.
And if I may, before I turn it over to you guys, I think it's very, very important for both of you to kind of bring your own perspective, but also go out there to the community and talk to people, see what things they like, what things they don't like, especially people your age, because I think we all bring a different perspective, whether you're a parent, whether you're a business owner and stuff. So sometimes we don't get enough of the younger community members and their voices here. So your job is really, really to go out there and, you know, talk to everybody, walk the parks. If you see someone of your age, even younger, if you see a six-year-old playing, ask them what they like about the park, what they don't, and so on. So the more we have here, the better informed we are of what the city's needs are and what we can do to fulfill those needs. Sorry.
Well...
I stepped in.
No, no, you did. But I mean, I will take the opportunity just to say a few words and just say welcome. And I think we're all enthusiastically looking forward to working with all of you. And I think you and I were having a sidebar comment, is that, you know, we're all gonna talk about things and talk through things. There's no right or wrong, and there's no sort of judging or anything. We're just trying to, you know, we have a charter and we have a commitment, and we'll work together towards them. So, welcome to both of you.
Well, I'd like to say a few words. Thank you for having me, accepting me into your community, into your home. And I'm gonna try to bring fresh perspectives of myself and my friends, and basically help you know what the generations that aren't as old as you guys...
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Are you guys sure about it?
I don't think he was talking about me.
Alright.
I'm gonna bring in some fresh perspectives, is all. Thank you so much for having me.
I also just want to say thank you for all the warm regards and welcomes. It's honestly my pleasure to sit on the dais today, and even undergoing the application process was just such a joy. I'm hoping to be that channel of communication between the youth in our city and kind of bring that fresh perspective, as Eric said. And I know that parks are such an important amenity, especially for those of young ages within our city, and I hope to kind of be that channel of communication and relay the needs of our youth to the commission. So, thank you.
The young commission would ask to go to the next agenda item.
At 2A, we have introduction of new or promoted CSP employees, and I believe we do not have any this month.
Thank you.
At 3, upcoming council agenda items, and I believe we don't have any?
No, President Sardarabegan, members of the commission, we don't have any items this coming month, but Public Works is taking a report next week on the Central Park project.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item is item 4, Commission Staff Comments.
I'll open up to commissioners first.
I have a couple comments. Number one, we had the opportunity to attend the grand reopening of Fremont Park, which was an incredible event, and it was wonderful to see how a 10-year process came to fruition. I just wanted to tip my hat to Onik and your staff. I imagine it took a lot of hard work to get that across the finish line, and it showed in the number of people that were attending, the smiling faces on just so many kids and the members of the community who participated. I highly, highly, highly recommend that if you haven't seen the park, go and visit it. Even now, probably, there's, you know, 50 kids there playing. It's an incredible testament to the work that Parks does here in the city of Glendale, and I just wanted to tip my hat to you and your team. The second comment was, had an opportunity earlier today with President Sardarabegan to attend the retirement party for Chris Peplo. Chris is, I've had the opportunity to get to know Chris over the past few months since I've joined the commission, and he is a one-of-a-kind man in terms of both his personality and his work ethic and the joy and love he brings to what he does at Parks. I do not envy you, Onik, for having to find his replacement, or more than one replacement for him, in order to fill his shoes. I know he's enjoying the, kind of, the rest of the day after his retirement party, but I just wanted to give my extreme thanks. It's very clear from the number of people that attended and the authentic and joyous comments that a lot of people made, that Chris is well-loved in the community. And I'm very happy that he lives in the community and he's not far away. He's not more than a phone call away. Hopefully, he does enjoy his retirement. He's got a couple more months before he sails off into the sunset, but I just wanted to acknowledge Chris and the work that he's done. And then, finally, I had a question regarding the RFP process for the tennis courts at Glorieta Park. I know, watching city council, that they're, the council directed that the RFP go back and be redesigned and re-offered, and I wanted to see if our commission would be playing a role in both the RFP itself and what the categories and qualifications would be that are being looked at, and also if our commission would play any role in interviewing potential respondents to that RFP. I would love for our commission to be involved in some way, shape, or form. I think this commission has a very good grasp on what the city of Glendale is looking for, and as it relates to its parks, and especially in this case, its tennis concessionaires. And I just wanted to get some feedback on what that process looks like, where we are on that, and what the interview process will look like. If you could just give us some information on that, I would greatly appreciate it.
Sure. President Sardarabegan, members of the commission, Commissioner Amirian. So, basically, the original RFP, back in last November or December, came to the Parks Commission. You reviewed it and made your recommendation to issue the RFP, and we did issue the RFP, the original one. We did issue the RFP, and our recommendation was to go with one vendor, and council went ahead and went with a different vendor that did apply as well. Currently, council has directed staff to reissue the RFP. We are gonna go back to council within the next couple months, actually, less than a couple months. We're working with our legal department to issue the RFP and working on the criteria, but council wants to review that RFP, and then we'll issue it. In terms of interviews, we're still not sure if we're gonna hold interviews or have a separate body rate the proposals, but we are working with our legal department. I will have more information by next meeting, if you want me to bring back a verbal report. We do have, you know, a litigation between one of the vendors, so the city is currently working with one of the vendors in terms of a lawsuit, which I can't touch on yet, because that's a closed-section item, but we are going back and forth, working with both the vendors and both legal representation.
That makes sense to me, and I understand that you can't comment on ongoing legal processes, but if there is an opportunity for us to review the RFP, and it's appropriate, I would love, I would love to get that opportunity, and I'd love to get any information about when it's going out, what the process is going to look like in terms of timing, because I think that's exactly what this commission is here for.
We will consult with our legal department and come back in November.
I have a comment and I have a question more. For the winter season coming up, the winter holidays coming up, is the city of Glendale planning on doing something? I guess the first question is, what is the city of Glendale trying, going to put together for the winter holidays? And more specifically, are there bigger projects, perhaps not for this season, but next one, of creating a winter wonderland or ice skating rink? Something that would make Glendale the destination for winter holiday celebrations and the break from school? And, but on top of it also, for the residents to not go out to, like, downtown or to Santa Monica if they want to do something that's of a winter activity?
The only event that we are planning on doing for the holidays is the holiday tree lighting, which we do every year here at City Hall. We did look into a winter wonderland where vendors can come out and sell holiday paraphernalia and holiday items here at City Hall and at one of our city-owned parking lots in downtown, but the cost there was a couple hundred thousand. And now the city, you know, we are gonna be in a budget deficit between 32 and 34 million next fiscal year. So, we didn't submit a service level increase to have a winter wonderland. Back in 2019, we did have a ice skating rink, which cost the city, I believe, around 470, 480,000. It brought in about 90,000 in revenue, so that's another service level increase that we wouldn't submit due to our budget issues that we're facing within the next couple years.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I had a couple of things. First of all, I also attended the Fremont Park opening, and it was, I think it goes into my top 10 best events that I've ever participated in. So it was really wonderful to see the way the community showed up and everyone showed up too, and it was really, really beautiful. and it was really, really beautiful. And then President Sardar Abigan, you spoke about your childhood there, and it was really, it was seriously moving. I've been thinking about it quite a bit because I spoke to another individual who's about your peer, and he also talked about growing up in Glendale and... It's on. Oh, kind of closer? Okay. Yep, yep. So, you know, he also talked about growing up in the city of Glendale and hanging out in the parks with friends and stuff, and so I just thought that was so moving. So that's wonderful. So it made me think, I went back to my childhood, which was only a couple of years ago. And I was trying to think of if I hung out at a park, and I didn't. I grew up in Providence, Rhode Island, and I hung out at a street corner that was a parking lot, and that's where the friends congregated. So it made me wonder, and I saw the list of parks and all the renovate, everything that's planned. I would be curious if there is a park, if there is property that isn't, that's zoned for recreation. I know there's a whole hoopla around high density. That's another conversation. But what I am curious about is if we do have property that's zoned recreation and we're not utilizing it, even to the simplest degree of putting grass, I'm not talking about something. I would just be curious if there, I understand that there might be a list, but if there is anything that's not on, I don't know what page this is, of one of the doc, page two of one of the documents you have.
Great question. So a couple of years ago, we did bring a report on all of the city-owned parking lots to be used as, or not all, but all of the city parking lots in South Glendale to see which one can be turned into a park. The commission back then has staff to look into Lot 11, which is the lot by the armory across the street from the new museum. So we are looking into that, but things have been put on hold, number one, due to funding, and also since we purchased the Joens Fabrics site. We're dedicating resources to apply for funding for the development of the Joens Fabrics. But that Lot 11 is still on the list to be looked at.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then the last thing, I did have one thing. So I happened to be driving on Canyatta. I was going north, and I looked over to Glorieta Park. It was around six, seven o'clock, and I was blinded by these lights. So I can't even imagine living in that vicinity, and I don't know if neighbors have said anything, but that was pretty strong lights.
Another great question. There is a project that we're working on with the Public Works Department. We're going to replace all of those lights, the LED, which will reduce the light spill only onto the field. So we're working on that. I believe the design's being worked on now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Vera, Eric, any comments?
Well, the other day, I was out at Fremont Park. I didn't attend the gathering. I didn't. But I was out at Fremont Park, and I saw that it was quite different. Well, in my childhood, which was now. I've seen Fremont Park be more like, not as fenced off, but I get that the fences are protected, to protect the players and also the park enjoyers so that balls don't go out, but it kind of felt like, kind of like a, kind of cooped up because of all the fencing. But other than that, I liked the new playground design. I liked the structure, that one big structure in the middle. It's more like parent-friendly, since parents don't have to go through like three structures to watch over their kids, and it's, and I like the transparency of the structures. Overall, I like that there's a lot of seating area now. Before, there was like a lot of flat space where you had to basically throw a blanket to utilize it, but now there's the seating, which I like. And I like that we have pickleball courts now, before we didn't. And overall, I like what we've done so far. Thank you so much.
I did attend the grand reopening, and I just wanted to echo the other commissioners' comments about it honestly being moving. I saw so many citizens of different ages enjoying the different amenities that we have now, and especially the passionate pickleball player and tennis player. There's a lot of those. And I just wanted to congratulate the city on bringing such a great kind of event for all to enjoy. And yeah, I'm glad that we have this amenity now reopened. I do also like the structure of the playground. I think Eric worded it perfectly. It's kind of parent-friendly because it's just one in the center. And I also like how there's different like water amenities as well, and I do appreciate that there's a lot of surveillance cameras.
One more thing, if I may add. I also like that the playground is moved. So before, it was like near the street where kids could run off or balls could be thrown there. And I like that we took that into account and moved it, so it's more safe for everyone and also more enjoyable at the same time.
Thank you. So first of all, I appreciate your comments, and I have to say, I was limited on time or else I would have had a one-hour speech about my childhood at Fremont Park. So I was given specific instructions, so I kind of had to, like, you know, my speech had to be within that structure. But with that being said, and again, you know, having a childhood that literally happened at Fremont Park, I was very touched by what we've been able to do. I think the park itself caters to so many different people now. Not that it didn't before, but now it's very, very open to so many different groups of people. So I think that, you know, that the planning that goes on behind it, and, you know, obviously, we hear a lot of people saying, wait, why did it take 10, 10 years to do? Or, you know, all the financials behind it? Well, because everything is so well-thought-out, and, you know, so many different aspects went into. And I think, aside from that, people were actually, you know, as far as the planning committee was concerned, they actually listened to what the city wants and needs. It wasn't just, okay, let's give it to someone, have them do it, and if it looks good to four people, it's great. Let's just move on from it. So I think that the time and effort and the planning and, you know, the changes that were made fit exactly what we needed and what the city needs. And just on a personal basis, when I, when I look at parks, I think that first and foremost, when we look at a park, we look at who it caters to, right? So kids. Kids need more and more, you know, outdoor space for them to grow, for them to fall and get up. You know, no matter how many times you lose in a game that's inside of an iPad, you don't learn about, you know, getting up after a mistake or after a fall. But in a park, that's what's learned. In a park is where you, you know, are able to communicate with other kids from different countries and different races and ethnicities and learn culture. And I think that Fremont Park really, really encompasses all of that. And, you know, again, it was a very touching moment for me on a personal level, but just seeing the number of people there. We opened on the 11th of October. I have been there every single day. My office is currently literally another one-minute walk. My parents' house is still there. So for me, I have been at Fremont Park for 11 straight days. I cannot say there's a single day where I was like, wow, this is magical, where I haven't said that and not seen a number of people there. So I think that I'm very excited. I think you, you know, we hit a home run with it. We really, really hit a home run. Just like the Dodgers, we won. So hopefully, you know, we continue that, and I really, really want to reach out to the community and say, you know, it's great. Enjoy it, but take care of the park as well. It's very important that all of us, not only as commissioners, but the entire community takes care of all of our properties, because if we don't, we're going to lose it. And, you know, in the future, we're going to have to invest more and more money into repairs instead of looking at new sites and new spaces to open up for the kids. So that's the comment I had about Fremont Park. I'm very, very fortunate to be part of growing up over there and be part of the grand opening, reopening. Second of all, touching on what Commissioner Zara said, I was also at Mr. Chris Peplo's retirement party. First of all, I have zero doubts that after retirement, Chris will still be around. I have no doubts that we're going to catch him at different parks, you know, doing his stuff. So I really have to commend the city because I think that, you know, we're obviously named the jewel city, and I think our employees are real jewels when it comes to the way they're picked, the way they really, really pour their heart into it. And I think Chris was a prime example of that. He really, really encompasses everything the city is. He's been very welcoming to every single commissioner that's been on the commission. And, you know, a lot of the people that got up, like Commissioner Zara said, they kind of had real, true heartfelt stories about him. I remember one time it was, I believe it was a Sunday night. I was driving by and I saw at Fremont Park, the sprinkler was all over the place. So I called him. I said, just to let you know, there's a sprinkler. And I go, and then it hit me. I'm like, okay, I'm an attorney. I shouldn't be calling an employee, you know, at nine o'clock on a Sunday night. We got to keep it between business hours, and I apologized. He's like, no, 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 don't be sorry. Next morning, 8:00 AM, he had a crew right there fixing, you know. So it kind of goes back to he really, really cares about every single property within the city, and every community member should be thankful of Chris and all of our employees. We really, really are fortunate to have, I think the vetting process that is put into place to hire our employees is great. That's why we have, you know, so many successful employees. So Chris, hopefully, you're not watching this at home, but if you are, thank you so much for all the years of service. Obviously, the commissioners, your coworkers, all appreciate it. But I think most importantly, you've really, really gone beyond your duty and really, really helped the youth of our community enjoy the open spaces that we have. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Sardar Abigan, members of the commission. Thank you for attending Fremont Park. It was a successful event. But the event couldn't have been successful without the hard work and dedication of a few folks that are sitting in the audience. And, you know, Gabrielle Golia, who the last, Gabrielle and Sebag, the last month, they've been running around trying to prep for the opening of the park.
I agree. I've seen her there a number of times.
Yeah. And then you have Joe Gonzalez, our park planner, as well as Cindy Converes, our assistant park planner. They were working day and night trying to open up that facility, as well as our assistant director, Teresa, who oversaw the entire committee and opening. And the Park Service's staff too. They were there, six in the morning, cleaning up, getting ready for the event. Chris and his team did an excellent job, as always. So I thank all the staff that was, that was involved, as well as our folks, friends over at Public Works, we had a number of employees in Public Works that were part of the opening committee. So truly appreciate it. It is Glendale's amusement park, I call it, little Disneyland. I watch the cameras a couple of times a day. There's 38 cameras there, and I watch to see what's going on, and it is busy from tennis, soccer, the waiting area, not the waiting area, the water feature during the weekend, as well as the playground. So thank you for everyone who was involved and looking forward to the next project.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item is consent items. At A is approval of the minutes of the commission regular meeting held on September 15th, 2025.
Teresa, oral communication? Yeah, I was gonna say.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wrote notes in oral communication, so I skipped right past that. Oral communications, but we don't have any cards and we don't have any callers. And that was five oral communications, and six is consent items. Approval of the minutes of the commission regular meeting held on September 15th, 2025.
I was going to motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call. Commissioner Alkazar, absent. Amirian?
Yes.
Arkalian? Rustomian?
Yes.
And President Sardar Abigan?
Yes.
The ex-officials do not vote. Next item is at seven, action items. Seven, A, citywide public art requests for qualifications. A1, motion to provide feedback regarding the citywide public art request for qualifications. And we have Jennifer Fukamoto-Jones and the consultant that will do a presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Sardar Abigan, members of the commission city staff. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present to you today. My name is Jennifer Fukamoto-Jones, and I'm the principal arts and culture administrator with the library arts and culture department, and we're very excited to be here today. I want to add to the Fremont Park joy. Congratulations. It was a fantastic event. I attended it with my family. The only comment I would say is the playground equipment is too fun because I had to prime my daughter off, and I couldn't get her away from the playground. But congratulations. It was such a fantastic event, and again, congratulations to city staff as well who made that happen. I'm here today to talk about a request for qualifications for citywide public art. We have been working with our public art consultant, Labas Projects, and I'm here with Catherine Forsyth, who's going to talk about the opportunities today. But we have been working with Labas Project since 2021, and we've had about three projects that we've been working with the Parks Department. The first is the Verdugo Park South Facility Building, which is the mural called Color Everywhere by artist Erin Miller Ray. The next one is actually coming up with Fremont Park. We have a beautiful tile artwork called Belonging by Kara Lynch, and those tile artworks are going to be installed in February of next year, so coming very soon. And the last project that we have coming up is the Palmer Park Basketball Court mural, which is called Basketball by, which I know you know very well, by Tanner Goldbeck, and we're very excited to install that in fall of next year. So we have some wonderful projects in partnership with the Parks Department. I'm going to invite Catherine to come up to give an overview of the different opportunities that we have for Pacific Park.
Jennifer, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Catherine Forsyth. I'm a project manager at Labas Projects. We're the art consultants, working with the city of Glendale to bring up to 10 art installations to the city. Jennifer went over the art installations that are coming or in progress. But today, I'm going to share a couple of new opportunities. These suggestions actually came from park staff. We went as a team and scouted the different areas, and we kind of agreed with park staff on their recommendations. So I'll just go over the new artwork opportunities that will be at Pacific Park. Oh, thank you. Just this one, right? Okay. So the first opportunity at Pacific Park are these exterior murals by the community center and in front of the library. Two pretty big walls. The one on the right is kind of like a vantage point mural. So there will be different planes, but then depending on where you're standing, it will be a cohesive artwork. We have these two artworks together, so they would be by the same artist. And we decided that just so it's a cohesive vision, so there's not mismatched artwork just because they are so close together in proximity. So our next artwork opportunity is the pavilion area. There are two pavilions right at one of the entrances. And for this opportunity, we're looking for an artist to beautify the legs, the roof, the underside of these pavilions with a painted application or something of that sort. And then our third, whoops. Oh, okay. And then this is just going back to the other one. So let's see if I'm, I believe those are the only two at Pacific Park. We have another opportunity, but it's not at a park. It's one of the medians. So we just wanted to present to see if there was any feedback on these two areas. Any questions, concerns, or anything else? So I will just open it up for questions.
I mean, I have to say...
Sorry?
Very good.
I was just going to say, do you have any like rendering of the art or any like the art direction, the color palette? Or, because, I mean, I'm using my imagination to see all kinds of things. I can go there from different, you know, vantage points. But like, do you have themes or?
That's a great question. So this is for our request for qualifications. So at this stage, we're going to release the RFQ.
So it's open?
On the 27th, I believe, and artists will apply for the opportunities. Then we pare down the artist list. We get sometimes up to 200 applications. And we go through the 200 applicants, choose a couple of artists to do site-specific concepts. And so at that stage, we would then have artworks to present to you from a few different artists, and then we would choose from there. But as far as art direction, we don't have any specific art direction for this area. We were, we had included some, but some kind of specifications, but whenever we went to the Arts Commission, they decided that we should take it out to leave it more open for artists to kind of have their own interpretation. Because it is close to a library, and this is a very like well-utilized park. There's always people there. So we had put... Um, so we had put to make it kind of more community-centered and something that had to do with the library and community center, but we decided to take that out to just kind of leave it open up to the artist's interpretation.
The budgets that are listed, those will be the budget for the artists themselves who end up doing the work?
That will be the full budget. That includes the artist design fee, the materials and, um, the installation as well. So basically the all-in budget for, uh, for this one would be for both murals.
And then are there, I understand that you didn't have any prescriptions in terms of color and, and subject. Are there any prohibitions or limitations in terms of what types of art can be submitted?
Um, great question. I honestly, as long as it's nothing, you know, of course offensive or anything like that, I think it's pretty open to interpretation. Um, yeah, for the wall on the right, I think something that makes, that looks good together cohesively, but we really don't have a ton of stipulations. It just has to, um, not be anything offensive, you know, be friendly for kids and everything, um, but that's, that's about it.
I'll be quick and I see Vera has her hand up as well. So in the packet, I see an opportunity, three Brandon Cerritos. Is that the third opportunity?
That is. Uh, that's the third opportunity on the RFQ. Um, I didn't get into that one since it's not at a park, but I'm happy to talk about that one as well.
No, no, it's okay. I just, I caught it as I was flipping the pages. I guess the question I have is, so who decides what would be, who decides on the final art? And then the second one, just a side comment for me. I am not an artist. I can't draw a straight line. So I can't, I'm having difficulty imagining something at pavilion area.
Yeah.
But I'm gonna be curious what it looks like, cause it feels, I'm imagining sitting there and looking at bright colors and gonna be psychedelic, but, um, that's just a comment. But I'm curious, like, so who, so once you set out the RFQ, then who decides what the final art rendering will be?
So, uh, after we get the two hundred submissions, I'm just using that number as an example, uh, because in the past, that's how many we've received. Um, typically at Labas Projects, our staff, um, sometimes a representative from the Arts Commission as well will pare down the number from two hundred to, um, ten, and then we'll go down further to like five. And then those five artists will do site-specific concepts and those concepts we present at the Arts Commission. And so the Arts Commission actually decides, um, who wins, um, the opportunity. So that's kind of how we figure what artists use. And then from there, they may have comments in, um, some art direction. So even if they decide on an artist and a concept, there might still be some more edits to go through or comments that the artist has to then, um, implement and then come back with the final um, artwork concept. And then for the pavilion, that's a great question. Um, it's kind of almost reminding me of Verdugo Park, the Aaron Miller Ray concept, which was she, there was like a bathroom slash closet area next to the skate park. And with that building, basically what Aaron Miller rated is she added color blocking and kind of brightened up, um, that building. And it's really crazy how much more inviting that space is because of her artwork and the colors and everything. So I think similarly with the pavilions, it might not be an artwork that's literal or drawings, but perhaps something more design-based would help just add, um, to the space and make it more inviting for, um, uh, people who utilize those pavilions. I know a lot of people have like picnics and things in that area.
Thank you.
Vera?
Um, I just had a clarifying question. What type of art medium would it be specifically? Is it only painting or is it like a mosaic or what's the vision?
Um, great question. It would be painted. So both would be a painted application. We kind of thought about a mosaic area in the pavilions, but I think maintenance-wise, it's too much because I know a lot of people, um, might bring food and have picnics and, uh, just for, from a maintenance standpoint, probably just painted application.
Okay. And then since it'll be painted and it's exterior, do you have any ideas of how to promise longevity and like so that it doesn't erode or the paintings don't kind of erase quickly? What's like, uh, the plan to kind of keep it nice and bright?
Sure, yeah. Um, so every artist that submits a concept has to also submit, um, a conservation and maintenance plan. So in that plan, it will detail, um, kind of like a guidelines of what to do, say, if it gets, hopefully not, but if it gets vandalized or, you know, if the artwork starts, um, to fade or something like that. So in the maintenance plan, they'll detail how we would go about fixing it. Um, sometimes we use like a coating for anti-graffiti, um, or they may just have to come touch it up or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, any comments?
Um, I think it's a good idea. Um, definitely. I've been using the library a lot and it has been kind of boring seeing the empty walls. Yeah, I think it'll brighten up every kid's day whenever they come and see the walls and get more invited to read those books and, you know, make a good use of the facility.
Uh, I'll try to make it quick. Um, the, the gray large wall, uh, by the library, I mean, I love modern architecture and stuff and I love the, the way the library looks, but I think that, um, if the artwork can somehow have one of those, um, and I always remember New York and all the street art and everything that they have, um, where it invites parents to constantly take pictures and kind of post them on social media where it becomes kind of like the famous wall in Glendale or whatever. I would love to see something like that. Um, I know there's a number of places, um, that they kind of have those like angel wings, right? And that became like this fad where a lot of restaurants started putting those on the wall. Um, so something of that nature where it constantly gets, you know, parents and kids to wanna take that picture, you know, that, that kind of puts out our city. I think there's a number of, uh, possibilities, um, that, you know, could be, so for me personally, that's the only thing I would, um, look for. Um, but I think, I mean, it, it's a great idea. I love the fact that, you know, the park will have, you know, a, a different thing. I think we've gone through the modern era as far as just the pure architecture. Now let's add a little bit more art to it. So good luck.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a great comment. Um, yeah, we hope to bring something iconic that people will wanna take pictures with.
I think.
I, I have one more question. I'm looking at the selection process. Would you explain what cultural equity is? Because I read the description and it, it didn't really make sense. So what, what is, what is cultural equity in terms of the selection process?
Um, cultural equity in terms of the selection process, I think it's just taking into account, um, bringing in like diversity and things like that. Not saying that that's the only thing we look at, but, um, typically sometimes there's a scoring rubric. Sometimes we don't use that. Sometimes we do use the scoring rubric and, um, that's basically on a point basis, um, you know, to not have a group of just one, uh, group of people. So it's kind of just to add diversity into the selection process.
Is that, is that, I mean, we have three opportunities, basically up to ten pieces of artwork. So when, when I hear the term equity, I immediately think about controlling for outcomes. Or is that going to somehow, or is there gonna be some sort of, of outcome control in terms of what types of artists and what, what, you know, culture and race is represented? Is that what that is, is meaning?
Um, no, I think to not have a group of, say, all, um, like a group of all, you know, white males. I don't think that's representative of the community. So I think just to have a diverse pool of artists, but I think whenever we're selecting an artist, we're just thinking of the best concepts. I don't think at the very end we're picking someone based on their race or nationality or anything like that. Yeah, hope that helps. Sorry if that was the best answer. Um, typically we just, um, do that to not, and, and also, also with cultural equity, it's artists that are not super advanced, you know? Maybe they're an up-and-coming artist, but they're from Glendale. They have a strong letter of interest. Um, it's giving them a chance rather than a more established artist. Um, so it's also diversity in that regard as well.
I, I have a question going back to the, the art and the medium. The, the wall is perfectly flat and I was wondering if a digital display was considered, cause it could be something that can be on rotation and we can have artists in residence. So it could be, you know, every quarter or so it could be a new artist that is displaying their art. So in a way the museum becomes a, um, the park becomes a gallery as well, instead of just like one permanent, you know, paint.
Yeah. Um, I love, personally, I love digital installations. I think that would require a higher budget to do something rotating like that, but, um, we would be interested in doing that perhaps somewhere else in this area. If there's an, there actually were quite a few blank walls. Um, to do something temporary like that, I think we potentially could, but I think it requires a lot more equipment to do something digital like that. Um, whereas this would just be a flat fee for a mural. Um, but that's something we could look into for a different area, I think.
Cause I think it could be a, I mean, obviously we have to look into the budgeting, but and I'm thinking of just like a projection, not creating a screen or anything, but especially with all the cameras there, you can create an algorithm that can create an interactive, um, art.
Yeah.
So there couldn't be an artist obviously who creates the algorithm, but there'll be everyone who enters in, they become part of the art in a pixelated version.
Yeah.
Wondering if there might be something like that.
Um, I think that's a possibility, but for this opportunity, I don't think we have the budget for that. Just, um, but I, I love that idea. Um, I know projectors are pretty expensive. Whenever you're using them outdoors, that's another kind of expense to protect the equipment. Um, so it'd be a little bit of a more challenging thing to do, but it's definitely a possibility in the future, even for a temporary thing.
Maybe corporate sponsorship.
Yeah, totally, yeah. Okay.
Can I, can I, I'm sorry, can I interject real quick regarding the di- uh, digital? Um, so the community development department is working on a plan for digital signage. Uh, so I'm not sure if digital art will fall under this plan. Cause right now we don't allow any digital signage or digital billboards, uh, in the city. But I know CDD is working on that. So maybe this is something that, uh, Library Arts and Culture can work with CDD and Art Department to include eventually, um, digital art, uh, in our park facilities, but we would need to get back to the commission and, uh, first, cause I'm not sure if it's allowed now to have digital signage, uh, up at our facilities.
Okay. Thank you for that, Clark.
Sure.
Yeah, we, I, we're definitely looking for an opportunity to add a lighting installation somewhere in Glendale. I know that's a big thing for us to try to bring kind of like a really big lighting installation or a, a gateway installation for Glendale. So we're still kind of trying to pin down a good location for that.
You know, I just had a quick follow-up question too. Um, I don't, I don't know if I saw it in the material and I think I heard you say it. Are the, are Glendale resident artists or Glendale located artists given some sort of preference or do they have to be in Glendale? Do they have to be a resident?
For this specific one, it's open to all artists eighteen, um, eighteen and older. But you know, that's a good question. It's really depends. In the past, um, Kasha Rico, who's doing the, um, a bench installation in Montrose, she's from the area and her letter of interest was really moving and she won, she was awarded the bench opportunity. And so, um, I can't say that they're um, prioritized or anything, but if they do make it to the finals and, um, they have a strong connection to Glendale, I think, you know, inadvertently, they kind of would have, um, a leg up, you could say.
Something to think about.
The didn't start our begging members of the commission. Um, I, I know it was in the report as well, but just to clarify, this is their, um, RFQ process, which is a selecting the artists who then get invited back to participate in the RFP process. And so, um, you know, I'm, I'm not sure if the RFP process is, is, um, something that's already ready or available to speak to, but that could be something that you know, we share or as part of the Arts and Culture Commission. Normally, um, art projects and art installations do go through the Arts and Culture Commission and generally the Arts and Culture Commission provides the, um, final selection. Um, and then we present it here for our commission to be aware of. And so this is our opportunity to provide feedback for, um, the Arts and Culture, Library Arts and Culture staff to also keep in mind and maybe incorporate as part of the RFP process. Um, so some of what you're saying, you know, could be included, uh, they'll, they'll take note and be included in the RFP process and I don't wanna speak for Jennifer. I'm not sure if the RFP would come back here, but, um, you know, we, we could bring a report back in, in um, presenting what the results of the RFQ were, then those artists would go to RF, um, would uh, submit proposals for the RFP, which again, would be evaluated through the Arts and Culture Commission. And, you know, our commission, of course, you know, whether it's as residents or as commissioners, you'd be previewed to attending the meeting, watching the meeting, providing feedback, and that's kind of how the process would go. So generally the art projects are, uh, go through the Arts and Culture Commission and, and they're the ones who do the final selection. But, um, in working closely with Library Arts and Culture staff, you know, our, our staff and the manager Seva Garbajian will probably be on the committee who reviews the artist submissions. Um, you know, just to make sure, you know, some of the questions you, you were asking is what kind of art is it gonna be? Will it be appropriate for, you know, the, the community? Will it be appropriate to the facility? You know, we have a school there, so we wanna make sure that, you know, it, it is appropriate for the children to see daily as they go in and out and you know, that community aspect, the connection to the area or the history, um, in looking at some of the proposals that we've seen. You know, again, I'm not big on art, you know, it, it's very subjective in my opinion. And so, you know, everyone has a connection to a specific type of art. And so, um, the Arts and Culture Commission ends up selecting the final artist who is awarded, but of course, um, there is a committee and, uh, you know, our staff will be a part of the committee who reviews the initial proposals that are submitted by the, um, as part of the RFQ. Whether we'll have a, a role in the RFP, um, we haven't gotten that far. But as far as the selection of the artists that will, um, proceed to the next phase, you know, our staff will be working closely with Library Arts and Culture to select the artists that would then be given the opportunity to submit the proposals as part of the RFP.
Thank you. We need a motion.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion, uh, approving the, uh, selection process with a caveat of clarifying the cultural equity portion, uh, because that, that's my motion. And then, um, just, just to explain that just a bit, you know, it says that the evaluation and scoring of artists submitting an RFQ will center around the following criteria. The first two criteria are fairly clear in terms of, uh, understanding what is being looked for. Uh, the last one seems like a very amorphous, uh, you know, opportunity to score based upon something that's just not clear as explained. Um, just reading it out loud, cultural and racial equity will be highly considered throughout the selection process. Cultural equity will be viewed through the lens of artist demographics as well as through the perspectives showcased and represented through the artwork and experiences of the artist or artist team. I'm, I'm not really sure how a score would be, uh, determined in terms of choosing an artist. So I, I would love if there is a little bit more clarity on what is actually being looked for with that third item. And that's, that's my motion.
Um, I know I'm not allowed to vote, but I just have a question kind of echoing his comment.
Sure.
Would we be able to move that to the eligibility section instead? Because therefore it's not actually like how the artist is scored, but rather who's eligible to apply and kind of it's more inviting and like culturally, culturally inviting, kind of saying like everyone's welcome to apply rather than we're gonna score you based off that, if that makes sense.
No, totally great. No, totally great suggestion. And I'm happy to like add some clarification and elaborate on the cultural equity portion. Yeah, we definitely don't want to make artists feel like they're being graded on who they are as individuals. I think that's kind of more for, just to make sure that we're diversifying the pool. So since, you know, LA and Glendale, we're such a melting pot of different cultures. We just want to make sure that we get some different representation. So I think that's a great suggestion to make that clear in the number three cultural equity. And that's a great suggestion to add it to eligibility as well, just to, just to emphasize that it's open to everyone.
Before we go down a slippery slope, be careful because what's the outcome? So are you looking to diversify who participates? Or are you looking to diversify the art? Two different things, right? Because you can have ten people diverse,
Yeah.
race, ethnicity backgrounds, and all do the same art.
That's very true.
Do you know what I mean? So, so which one is it? And I think maybe if you clarify, because I have a sense when, I mean, it's an interpretation, right? So I read this as like, we're not going to have ten basketball arts. You know, they're not going to be sport created. I know, I'm sorry, but they're not, or they're not all going to be flowers. There, you know, so, there you go. So there's sort of a diversity, you have sports, flowers, balloons, whatever it is you need to have. So that's how I read that cultural equity, not just about the people. So two different things. So maybe if you clarify it in this, and I get it, it says through the lens of the artists. Maybe the demographics isn't the right word, but the artists.
Yeah, I, yeah, I totally can see why there's confusion on that one. I think we should elaborate on exactly kind of what we mean. I think it's just kind of a way of letting underrepresented artists have more of a chance. Rather than getting bogged down by the, by like people's race and ethnicity, even though sometimes.
If that's your intention, then just clarify. But I thought you did, I thought I saw it somewhere.
Yeah, no, that's a great suggestion.
There was something, or maybe I was reading something else. I don't, I've been reading so much today, work in here, I don't know where I saw that. But I did see somewhere, somewhere, something about underrepresented. And that's okay, if that's the intention.
Yeah, it's on the eligibility portion. Part two, the artists in traditionally historically underrepresented groups are strongly encouraged to apply, which I think is sufficient. I mean, we're saying, you know, it's open to everybody, please apply. Because we want to give you an opportunity to showcase your artwork.
Thank you, I know I read it somewhere. But, and that's fine if it's, I mean, I, I was fine with that statement.
Well, thank you for the suggestions. It's actually very helpful, so.
Jeff.
I thank you so much, Commissioner O'Kelly, and for that comment. I think exactly was what we were aiming for. We want to make sure that this RFQ is comfortable with everyone. So that's why we're coming here to receive your feedback. So we want to make sure as we move forward that the language is acceptable and up to the, the par of what you're looking for. So if that's a suggestion that we would like to remove the cultural equity section out of the eligibility, I'm sorry, the selection process into what Commissioner Garbedian had recommended, we can absolutely do that. This is why we're here, we want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Well, I, sorry.
But is that what you're intending? Because I read that as we don't want to have a certain same theme everywhere. There's sort of cultural equity in terms of variation of what we're seeing. So if that isn't what you're doing, that's fine, just be clear.
That's, that's.
I mean, I would prefer that you do, because you want some diversity in. I mean, I love it when I see the, the arts that I see on the electron, was it the polls that I see? And it's, it's all a variety and it's, it's great. And it's not just one theme across the way. So if you could include maybe cultural equity instead of cultural and racial, that might clarify it.
Absolutely.
Because you already have it in the eligibility, so you're fine. Maybe take the cultural equity, okay, we're red penning this for you. Just take out the word racial, because that, that's inflammatory, just take it out. And just say cultural equity and that'll, does everybody, I don't know if everybody agrees, but I think.
I think Teresa.
Sorry, President Sardar Bagan.
We're going sideways.
Members of the commission, no, we did have a motion that was introduced. I was actually going to ask if Commissioner Amirian wants to clarify his motion and if there is a second and if we're going to amend, unless you want to amend your motion to add or incorporate anything that was said.
So I think based upon the discussion after I made the motion, there's clearly some room for interpretation in this. And so my motion was that we approve the RFQ with the understanding that in the selection process, under cultural equity, that there will be a clarification of what this actual paragraph is looking for in terms of evaluating and scoring the artists. And there have been some suggestions to what the interpretation has been from various people on, on the commission. But I think, I think leaving it to clarify would allow then the Arts and Culture Commission to watch the, the discussion. And then using the discussion and seeing how there's multiple opinions about what this might mean, then work to clarify this part of the selection process. So I'll leave my motion as is and hope that it gets a second. And then hope that the Glendale Arts, Culture and Commission watches our discussion and that helps them clarify that section.
Okay, the only thing I would like to add is that the motion before you is not necessarily to approve the RFQ. It's to just provide feedback. So if you would like, if we could just take that piece out.
Yeah, so to provide feedback regarding the RFQ, you know, specifically clarifying the selection process, point number three under cultural equity.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, for a second, or is there further discussion, sorry?
I think I just wanted to just clarify, just, I think going back into the result, like just, because I, I think it does need to be more specific in a way, maybe like the results, the, the art. So not necessarily the artist, but the art will, the art will be selected based on diverse, you know, was it like a color palette, a design direction? I think if you can just be added to that, because I just don't want, I don't want it to be focused on the people. I don't want to remove, it could be different, because eligibility, it's open to all, it's welcoming all. And we want to be specific there that we want to have cultural, racial, diversity should be in eligibility. But and then it should be different from the selection. And then to emphasize that we, like what are, what, what are they actually looking for? Just wanted to be clear on that, because I don't want to, I think like there's two different, because eligibility is different from the final result.
Commissioner Restomian, I just wanted to add, just to clarify again, and Jennifer, please correct me if I'm mistaken. But the actual art will be part of the RFP, which is not here. So this is just the artist. So my understanding from what I've read and then talking to Jennifer is the artists aren't necessarily submitting the actual art that's going to go on that wall as part of this process. They're just submitting samples of their work. And then they will be selected to be invited to apply for the actual RFP, which will be more specific to this site. Am I correct? Okay, so there will be another RFP packet, which will then give the artists that are selected to come back and submit a proposal, which will probably have more of the medium and anything else specific to the art that we're looking for. If there is anything we're looking for that will be part of the RFP process.
Okay.
We're going to see them again.
I'll be back.
So the example would be you're going to have diverse, the diversity, the cultural equity is you're not going to have people who just paint butterflies or people who just paint. It might be people who use different mediums. So that's where the equity would play out maybe.
Yes, and I probably didn't.
It sounds like we're going to need, you have a lot of, watch the video, make some clarification. I'm going to, if it's time, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. A roll call? Alkazar's absent, Amirian?
Yes.
Arakalian?
Yes.
Restomian?
Yes.
And President Sardar Bagan?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks for your time.
Thank you so much.
Next is seven B, recommendation of community preferred design for the Elk Mini Park replacement project. At one, we have a motion to recommend city council approval of the community preferred design Mother Tree Grove for the Elk Mini Park Playground Replacement Project.
So hi, good afternoon, President Sardar Bagan and commissioners. I'm presenting on item seven B with the recommendation that staff respectfully recommends that the parks Recreation and Community Services Commission adopts a motion recommending city council approve the community preferred design Mother Tree Grove for the Elk Mini Park Playground Replacement. So just to review some of the scope and background, sorry, my name is Joseph Gonzalez, Park Planner with Community Services and Parks. So this is for the removal and replacement of the playground at Elk Mini Park, which was first installed in 2004. And so the scope includes adding integrated shade and poured in place rubberized surfacing, which will allow the entire playground to be accessible. The budget for this project is $400,000. And it was awarded, that funds through the Community Development Block Grant Program. And as part of the design process, we did have a survey go out to the community that offered four options for the playground, which was live from October 3rd to October 17th. The, the community preferred playground was designed by Game Time. And just mentioning too, that as part of the design process, we did apply for a grant through Game Time, which was approved. And so that's providing us with a 10% or $40,000 discount on the, on the project. And just noting as well, as part of that grant, we were, had to select like a primary benefit for the playground. And so we chose play on, a play on design, which kind of emphasized more physical activity and development of motor skills. Just kind of noting that as like a, a benefit. And the location of the park is in South Glendale on Elk Avenue, just south of Colorado Boulevard. So before you are the four concepts that were presented to the community. Because Elk Mini Park kind of has a nature inspired theme. It has a natural like wood arbor as you enter. And then the logo for the park has like an elk cutout. We thought that a more nature inspired playground was appropriate. And so all four concepts incorporate a lot of nature. Or most of them had like a sculptural or element incorporating like a, an animal. And so these all seem very popular, but ultimately, three quarters of respondents prefer the Mother Tree Grove design. The open feedback that we received on the survey mentioned loving like the, the tree element that was kind of pretty unique in the playground and also appreciated the nature inspired kind of designs. Respondents to the survey were mostly in the immediate vicinity around the same zip code. But you can see some throughout the area did respond. We did post posters in the playground during that entire period. So that's how the people were alerted of the survey. And also we posted it on our social media and in the newsletter. So you can see a little more of the design itself. It does have kind of a sculptural tree trunk landing that's kind of customized there, different from a typical playground, and then some sculptural elements and a lot of play panels. And then also a lot of integrated shade, which was another request that we had of this playground. Here's a plan view, kind of see the, the layout of, of the plan in the, in, in the play area. And just noting that there's a concrete pad that does come into the playground, which will be removed and incorporated. So the entire area playground will be PIP. And that concludes the presentation. So open to questions or if you have any comments on the preferred playground.
I think this looks great and we have an overwhelming consensus from the community. It provides a lot of shade, which was something that I saw the city council talk about during one of their meetings. And, you know, I think this is a great job. And two to five year olds, even my six year old, I think, would have a blast playing on this playground. So it looks great, thank you.
I, I was just going to say, I love the ladybug. But I did have a question, same as I asked you last time. Warranty guaranteed by the vendor, any concerns around? I mean, does that ladybug, will it ever come off?
So typical, playgrounds typically have like a 10 year warranty. And so, so those will be at least the playground features. The surfacing typically is a little less like five years and then those get replaced every 10 years. And so, you know, staff will respond, I guess, for any repairs necessary. But Game Time is fairly responsive on repairs that we've seen on other playgrounds. This is a vendor we have used at other locations.
Okay, that was the other question I asked.
Success in replacing them.
I have a question about the, the response number nineteen.
Oh, oh, it's a specific response in the.
Yeah, and in that.
Can you read the?
It's a long one. Love Mother Grove Playground, one observation I've had, both as a parent of several children and from my experience running a daycare, is that the panel games such as tic tac toe, et cetera, are rarely used by kids. In my experience, these types of features often don't capture children's interests for long and may not be the best use of budget or space. Especially since the playground around, since the playground already includes a great musical sensory element. Instead, I'd like to suggest considering equipment that encourages more active and social play, such as a playground spinner or a seesaw. These are consistently popular with children and tend to get much more use and engagement. Thank you for your time and for continuing to invest in such valuable community spaces. Very long one. Going back into her and, you know, you know, leaning into her stated expertise. Are there, I don't have a list of what's included in the park. But are there interactive? Because I'm seeing like the slide and I'm seeing the wall with like a touch interaction. But is there a seesaw? Is there like other activities that would encourage interaction between children?
So the, the tower itself does incorporate a lot of play elements. And actually, the, the element in the top right is a little spinner seat. So you sit on it and it spins. And so there is a spinner element. I think the, some of the challenges with, this is kind of a smaller playground, it's less than 1,500 square feet. A lot of the, the play elements, especially adjacent to each other, have constraints as far as like how close they can be to each other and then spacing from other elements. And so a lot of the panels are along the outside of the, the playground. And those were just added as additional amenities, because they don't have a fall zone. They don't have any requirements. So they're able just to be placed anywhere along the edge. And so that's why they're kind of just added to the, the exterior. But you can't necessarily add a seesaw in those areas or, and so that's kind of the challenge with some of these, these playgrounds is, unless, unless we enlarge the playground altogether, it's harder to add some of those larger elements. And like swings are another one we hear a lot about, but either you have a swing or you'd have a tower. And so you, you have one or the other essentially. So that's kind of some notation. And the other comments we got a lot with the mini parks, they don't want us to remove any of the grass. And so we're kind of limited to like the existing playground area.
Thank you.
Sorry, I had one more comment. So my daughter won't use this, but maybe my granddaughter, she just turned 32 today. So she's watching, happy birthday, Niri. But I noticed that when I was at Fremont Park, I haven't been to a playground area in a while, the, the ground was kind of bouncy. Is that intentional and is that, how does that, what's the wear and tear on that? And is that what, what'll be at this park too?
Yeah, so that's the poured in place rubberized surfacing.
What is it called?
Poured in place, so PIP is the poured in place acronym. And then it's, so it's a rubberized surfacing. And so it does have a certain fall impact scoring. So part of the safety of these playgrounds, they actually do fall tests on them. And so there's a certain, also it's supposed to limit like injuries to heads for children who fall. So that's, it's meant to be bouncy.
All right, that's wonderful. And it lasts a good time?
It should last about 10 years. And that's where, so typically they, they have a mix of like color and black. And so you can pay extra to have, maybe at the bottom of the slides where there's a lot of wear and tear, it's like full color and, and higher quality binding and it'll last a little longer. But it is more expensive. So those are, sometimes we, we have them added in areas where we already anticipate it'll wear faster. So typically under, under swings, at the bottom of slides. So that could be something, if we're concerned, we could add the extra binding in those areas.
We'll defer to your judgment.
I just wanted to ask, like to clarify, just because I'm curious, what are the exterior elements? Like not the actual structure, but there's different things that I'm seeing, like what specifically are they?
So, so they're different like sensory and play panels. So some of them like spin or they make noise or have instruments integrated. So they're just various things, especially for younger, younger kids. Or sometimes kids with disabilities, they're able to utilize those more effectively. And so they're on the ground level, they're all accessible. And so they're just more play elements. And again, they don't have a fall zone requirement. So we're able just to add them like around the perimeter.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I think this is a great idea. Same thing with Fremont Park. I, I think that definitely shade is a big concern, and we, we're doing a great job with that. I also have to comment that I like the ladybug. It's, it's pretty tiny, but really noticeable. Thank you for doing what you have so far.
And I think those little custom design pieces really kind of stand out, and, and I think that's why this one was selected, because it has the most of those elements incorporated.
So I'll, I'll try to keep it short. I love bears, there's a bear that visits my house once, once a week, so, but with that being said, I actually think that the Mother Tree Grove, with the amount of shading it has, it's perfect. I love the base color being of blue and green, I think it's, it's very inviting. And just, I mean, I, I second with what you're saying, as far as putting extra elements on the sides, as someone that deals with a lot of injury cases and stuff, that's the first thing I look at. Anytime you guys present anything, the first time, first thing I look at is, okay, is there enough space in case someone falls? So, you know, with, with the, the one comment that you had, you know, obviously if we had unlimited amount of space, we could do so many different things, but given what it is, I think it's, the space is being utilized, you know, perfectly, so great job on, and I'm glad the community actually picked that one, because that was my favorite too, so.
With that, I will make a motion to recommend the city council approve the community preferred design Mother Tree Grove for the Elk Mini Park Playground Replacement Project.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Alkasar Zapsen, Amirian?
Yes.
Or Akalian?
Yes.
Rostomian?
Yes.
And President Sardar Begian?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item, item eight, reports for information only. At A, we have the capital improvement program update.
So thank you again, President Sardar Begian, Commissioner. So again, my, my name is Joseph Gonzalez, I'll be presenting on the capital improvement program, or CIP update. I'm just noting that this is an update stemming from project statuses back from July 2024 all up until this month. We are going to be covering 25 projects, so I'm going to go pretty quickly. I will pause after each like section, so you can, if you do want to ask any questions while we're still kind of in that section. And I'm just noting that more detail is in the report, that offers the full project background and analysis, who the project manager is, the budget. So I'll, I'll try to cover as much of that as I can, but we will be moving kind of quickly over these. So just first highlighting the completed projects, so there are four we want to highlight. One has been talked about Fremont Park, but you see there's a diversity both on the east side of the, the city and then in South Glendale. So first was the Emerald Isle Playground Replacement Project, so this was replacing the age playground at Emerald Isle. This was completed last November, and as you can see, replaced both the, the two to five playground and the five to 12 playgrounds. This is a pretty large area, and it also had a swing area, so this was, this playground costs $866,000. The CCO is a pretty extensive playground upgrade, and it is pretty beloved. And here you can actually see the full color landings at the bottom of the, of the slides, so you can kind of see like how they, we can incorporate that, and this is also a Game Time playground. Next is the Fremont Park Renovation Project, so as been stated before, this project was under, in planning and then fully executed over a 10-year period, so it was a full project redevelopment. It did add a community building, added the soccer field, added the, the splash pad. It, it renovated all eight tennis courts and renovated the playground, added fitness equipment, so a lot of new amenities were added in. The park was open October 11th, so just a couple weeks ago. And again, the full project budget since inception was about 27 million. And here you can see some of the projects now, a now iconic climbing tower, and it's funny that now I've been doing some outreach for our Oscar plan, which I'll get into later, but a lot of people are mentioning this as a playground that they, they feel is the favorite in, in the city. You can also see some of the new other, new elements. And then here are some pictures from the grand opening and the ribbon cutting activities, and people actually playing and using the, the park after it opened. So next, highlighting Pacific Park and then the Shade Water and Play Feature Project. So this project provided shade over the two to five and five to 12-year-old playgrounds. It added the, I think it renovated the PIP surfacing in the playground as well. It provided for new shade in the pool area. It also replastered the pool and the concrete deck, which was completed last year. And then for the splash pad, it renovated the complete splash pad and incorporated a recycling water system. So this project was, costed a bit over $3 million. It was, the splash pad did open in May, and then as a part of the project, they are improving some of the streetlights in the, in the parking lot, so that's one element that's still being completed, but otherwise this project is completed and open to the public. Also another great successful project, we were happy to open this during the summer so that people could utilize it. The last project, just to highlight in the completed projects, was just the Shoal Canyon Ball Field. We did replace the entire perimeter fencing, since, since it was in very bad shape, and portions of it were actually falling down the hillside there. So now they actually put in a, a black vinyl on the, the fencing material itself, so you can actually see through it, and so you can see that there, and it was a successful project. That was completed last November, and that concludes the, the completed projects. I didn't know if anyone had any questions about any of those, otherwise I'll continue. So projects that are currently in construction, so we're highlighting four projects that are just starting, I think all of these are just starting construction as well, so these are just starting. First is Adams Square Mini Park and Mayor's Bicentennial Park. So this was the, the playground replacement at both parks. This, the selection of these playgrounds went through a similar process as what we described at Elk, where we essentially developed four concepts, went to the community for a month with the survey, they determined their preferred selection, we came to the commission, got commission support, and then went to council for approval. We did get council approval on these two playgrounds back in August, and we are ordering them now, and we're hoping by spring the equipment will be here, and the install will begin, and hopefully by the end of next summer, they'll be fully installed. For Babe Herman Field, we are renovating the restroom and providing some ADA improvements for the restroom, and so this project is currently underway. The budget is $450,000. We did bid this out in April, and so we did get approval to award the construction contract, I believe, a month ago, and so we're just waiting for this project to mobilize, but it will be moving. We'll make sure to coordinate with the school so that they don't have any issues with drop off in that area. Central Park Block Project, so this is a, another almost full park redesign, so this park is located at the same Central Park Block as the Glendale Library, the Adult Recreation Center, and the forthcoming Armenian, American Museum. So the museum itself actually displaced the park, but because the Armenian Museum is having subterranean parking, we are replacing all surface parking with this expanded park, which totals, I think, 2.71 acres. And so this new park will incorporate a new turf field, large field, amphitheater, splash pad, playgrounds, all these new plazas as you enter. And so this project, I know next week they're gonna take a council motion to negotiate award of the construction contract, and we anticipate construction will start March 2026, and we're hoping it'll be about a year construction period before it's completed, and hopefully in spring, summer 2027, both the Armenian Museum and this park will open at the same time. So you can see some of these...
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
So can you go back? Where, what's, where does it start and end? Can you, can you show it on your, like all the trees to the right, is that all part of the park? Or is it just that green area?
So all the areas that kind of are illustrated in the bright green are kind of all elements, so yeah, it's all, yeah, it's that, that entire central area that goes through the middle between the, the buildings, the area all the way on the east, up to the corner. They're actually adding fitness equipment on, on the west side of the library. And so that's, and then just as you, and then there's actually alley access from the brand, or Central Park Paseo that leads into the park. And so part of the concept was to, so the top left image kind of shows as you're coming into Paseo, you actually come up the stairs into the Central Park area. And then this kind of highlights, on the right, top right is in the Central Park with the Armenian Museum in the background. The bottom left is that, that northeast corner where it had like the boardwalk through the trees, and then the bottom right is kind of some of those plazas in the, that were kind of behind the amphitheater area. Kind of give you some ideas of, so yeah, this is also a fairly large project, I think $15 million estimated construction, and we do have allocation for those.
Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, so the, the current library's parking lot is being removed since it's, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's what the green, all that spaces, so.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that too, so, so the parking lot is being removed?
Yeah, the RC is there already, in the, the photo, so.
The, the green area where the parking lot is going to be taken out will be basically an area where we're going to be having concerts, movies in the park, special events, because they're also building an amphitheater in that area.
It's gonna be great.
On the, on the paper, and I'm scrutinizing, it says seasonal ice rink. Is this, is my dream coming true?
That was part of the master planning, when the consultant was conducting master plan, that there's a possibility that we can add an ice rink there seasonally in the grass area. That's something that we will be looking to, looking into if funding is available. Of bringing the ice rink into downtown Glendale instead of where we had it six years ago at City Hall.
Great, thank you.
And so I was just checking the feasibility, if it would fit, and apparently it could fit, so.
Great.
If there's no other questions, we'll move on to the next project.
I actually had a question. So where's the arm, oh, the armory's on Colorado.
It's just right across.
And it's not here. Was it on here?
It's right across the street on, south of this project.
Oh, it's on across the street. Okay, got it. Okay, now I'm oriented.
So the next project is the Pacific Park Edison Elementary Joint, Joint Artificial Turf Multipurpose Field Replacement. So this is a field that's shared both with the park, for park users and the Edison Elementary, and it's an existing artificial turf field that was last replaced in 2015, and so now it's, it's lasted, and that was after, I think, an initial update as well, so we're, we're placing the turf carpet now. We will be providing storm drain improvements, so at least it'll drain better. We already added drainage above the field to ensure that the blacktop wasn't draining onto the field as well, so we're, so made that improvement, and then we're also overlaying two soccer fields going the other way as well, so you can have more playability on the field. And this will be replaced using brand-new turf technology, I think it's going to be the coconut husk comp, mix infill, so it won't be the rubberized elements anymore. And so that's, they, they went, I think, last month to get approval on replacing this with the contractor, and so we're just waiting for mobilization, which I believe they can already order the, the turf now, and they're waiting till around Thanksgiving time, when the, the school won't be using the field to then start replacing it. And then there will be a, a phase two next year, just to raise the fence on Vine Street, and then finalize the ADA improvements on the, the south side of the field. So now going to projects that are in permitting, we have three that are all kind of central Glendale. So the first is just at Shoal Ball Field, so again, this is the ball, Shoal Canyon Ball Field. We're adding in another bullpen that was requested by stakeholders, and so this will go near Field One, and so as part of that improvement, we did have to go through permitting, which requires some ADA improvements in the parking lot as well, so we're going through permitting supplemental now. It says it's completed, but we actually only completed the, the design review, and so now we're just going through permitting, and hopefully that'll be a quick approval as well. So there'll be another bullpen there. For Sports Complex Field Three, this is actually a turf replacement, so this is a currently natural turf softball, softball field. There'll be an artificial turf field, which will have soccer fields in the outfield. And so this project is still going through permitting, we're hoping, we were hoping to go into construction in November, but there is a solar array project that is occurring in the parking lot, so we actually may have to wait until January to break ground on this one. But a lot's happening at Sports, Sports Complex right now, so we're just trying to align with everything that's happening, so hopefully this is coming soon. And then at Verdugo Park, on the north end of the park, we are looking to replace the restroom building, add a small community building to it, and then we will be replacing the, the north playground with meditation maze, and so there will still be a south playground, South Verdigo Playground, to accommodate the larger crowds, and this will be more of a passive area. And so this is still in permitting as well. We're hoping to get permits by April 2026, and then from then, there should be about a year turnaround to complete the, the project, so ongoing. No questions there, I'll keep going. So now there's 11 projects that we have in planning and design currently. So here's a distribution of those, you see there throughout the city, starting first with the, the city's first acquisition in 25 years of a park site, the former Joann's Fabrics Site, which is a 2.39 acre location. We're currently finalizing the RFP to hire on a designer to, to start this process. Part of this has been delayed, there have been a few grant opportunities that have come up, so we've applied for the Land and Water Conservation Fund for $6 million for implementation of this project. We have, we're applying to Measure A for planning, a $500,000 planning grant for this project, so we are trying to get funding as we're even conceptualizing this project. We're hoping within a year we'll have at least three concepts to take to council, to consider and make a recommendation, also to commission. We do anticipate it'll probably be a two-year design process, and then probably a two-year construction process, so we're hoping by 2030 we'll have this, a new park opening in South Glendale. Then we're looking at some improvements at Brand Park, so first the Doctor's House, we're doing a conditions assessment of the building now to do some repairs, there were some termite infestations, so that analysis is, is occurring now, and then once that assessments determines the necessary repairs, we'll go out to, to bid on those. Also at Brand Park, the Tea House, adjacent to the Doctor's House, this one already has had its assessment report updated, and so we've already had a requisition go out, we have contractors walk the site in September, and so I think an award's pending, and, and so that work will, will start soon. So Casey Stengel Field, so this is at Verdigo Park, on the south side is the, the Stengel Field, which is used by GUSD as well as city patrons. So we did receive a $2 million grant through Senator Portino's office, this was about two years ago, that was awarded. We do have a designer now coming on board to do the improvements, which, which include a dugout, shade cover, a new press box, two bullpens, and then a shade structure over the three bleachers. And so planning is just starting, we just hired on a, a consultant, Community Works Design Group, to lead this project, and so designs are just kicking off. So hopefully in two years this one will be done, or year or two. So next is the Glorieta Tennis Concession Building renovation, so we will be replacing the tennis concessionaire building, and we will be adding a small restroom to it and a viewing area as part of the building, and then a whole new concession building for the concessionaire that, that operates there. And so this is currently nearing 100% design, and so we're hoping that we'll be able to submit for permitting soon on this project. Pacific Park, we're also renovating the, the natural grass softball field on, at the site, so this is currently still in early design, or sorry, 60% design, so we're just finalizing the storm drain improvements on the site. We also want to enlarge the field slightly to ensure that we get to full-size soccer field, or U-10 soccer fields. So this park's, project's ongoing. So we're also in the process of updating our open space conservation recreation element. Actually, we have another report on this that comes, that's gonna follow this one, so I'll, I'll skip this item for now, and we can find more detail in the next report. Also at Sports Complex, we will be replacing this Field Four and Five Artificial Turf Fields, so we do have an RFP drafted that's with Legal Now, and we're hoping to release that soon to get a designer on to design the replacement for this field. It is needed, it is needed, and you can see from the pictures that it's, it's pretty worn. At Stone Barn, there was a leak issue that was identified about a year and a half ago. We have done an initial water intrusion assessment, and this project has been turned over to Public Works to evaluate how to move forward with those repairs. So there's, at least in the last, the rains we had last week, we were able to document additional rain intrusion along the windowsill, so we're hoping it's just the windowsills, but Public Works will let us know how, they'll move forward with this soon. Wilson Mini Park Playground Replacement, so this, similar to Elk, this project has already come to commission, I believe a few months ago, and with the community recommendation to, to replace the playground with this ice cream and store playground... and with the community recommendation to, to replace the playground with this ice cream and store, um, playground design. And so, um, we do plan on going to council in November with both Elk and Wilson to get a recommendation from council to award these contracts, to move forward with these replacements, so. So you know this one will be the next, uh, go along with Elk to get recommendation for, um, approval. And then lastly, um, there's just a few projects that don't have any updates at this time. We've had, um, we have been working, looking at working on these soon, just a capacity issue. First is a Cerritos splash pad and restroom replacement. So, uh, we have been going through the city and replacing, um, the old-style splash pads with the new recycle system splash pads, and so we have a hundred fifty thousand through Measure A, which is a direct, uh, direct allocation grant, to develop a plan for replacing, um, the splash pad. Um, the playground is also, uh, dated and, as well as a PIP surfacing, so we are looking to replace all of those. The splash pad, do now have a requirement that they require a shower, um, associated with the, the splash pads, so the restroom will also need to be improved as well, so this is all gonna be part of a larger redevelopment of the Cerritos Park, that, that hopefully will get kicked off in the next year. In terms of a dog park, there was a feasibility study that was completed two years ago. Per council direction, there was some challenges with, um, a selection of actual dog parks site. A lot of the sites that were recommended for evaluation were existing parks with the, with the caveat of the, the GCC South Campus Site on Garfield. At the time when we did the evaluation, uh, GCC was offering up that site as a potential park, but since then, um, GCC has let us know that their, uh, enrollment has increased, and now they, they are seeing the need to utilize that site, and so they kind of, kind of rescinded that offer, so now we are, uh, we have been given direction to evaluate Palmer Park's Community Garden as an opportunity to share part of that site for a dog park, so we will be doing some outreach in the next few months to engage on that possibility and report back to council. And just lastly, um, the, uh, SE Edison Easement, uh, proposed Glorieta Park Expansion. There was a concept to look at entering into a lease agreement with, um, Edison about entering into their utility right away and developing a passive park. Um, at this time, um, we were, we were looking at a lease agreement, but, um, we were also looking for funding to help support planning and, and development of a park like this, so until we do secure additional funding, we weren't looking to enter into a, an agreement at this time. Um, and we are focusing a bit more on, on park opportunities in South Glendale, but we are still, um, holding this as an opportunity, and it looks like SE is, um, keeping that open as an opportunity. So at this point it's just, um, on hold, but that concludes the update on the CIP. If there's any questions on any particular project, um, please let us know.
Do you need water?
No, I'm okay, I'm okay.
Marathon.
I, I just had a suggestion, and you take it how you will. The one thousand South Central Avenue Project, Joann Fabric, and I'm reading where it says, "Park amenities may include, but not limited to, children's play area, water play area, et cetera," it's listed. Just a thought, and, and I'm not a pickleball player, but man, at Fremont Park, we, we heard that they were pretty vocal. And I also know that it can be pretty noisy, so if you live adjacent to it, you might not want to, um, you might not like the noise, and I'm thinking this might be a good location for that, 'cause I don't see much of residential around it.
The north side has residential, the north side has residential, the south.
They're behind it.
Yeah, so, the, the, the bottom portion, I think it's on Chevy Chase, right, or Las Vegas?
I was trying to remember where it was, what is it, Chevy Chase?
Central and Chevy Chase.
So the Chevy Chase side has businesses across, that might work.
Okay, but yes, somewhere there where there is not, yeah.
You got the picture that you're looking at, the bottom.
That's, that's.
That's Chevy Chase, Central's to the left of that.
No, Central's on, Central's on the bottom, and then Chevy Chase is on the, on the right, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And then Acacia's on the north side.
Well, just food for thought, just 'cause I didn't see as much residential and just.
And so as part of the design process, once we get a designer on board, we'll be doing a lot of outreach and helping to determine whether we want more passive, passive elements or active ones.
Okay.
Thank you. Next item?
Just, just stay up.
Do you want some water? We can give you some.
No, I'm okay, this is the last one, this is a short one.
Next item, uh, at B is Open Space Conservation and Recreation Element Update.
President Sardar Begian?
Ignore my likes.
So you're presenting on item eight B, um, again, this, this report is for information only. This is, uh, update on the open space cons, open space conservation and recreation element, which we're terming as Oscar for short, so the Oscar update. So just some quick background in terms of what general plans, so, um, cities adopt general plans to address issues facing the city and set policies and goals for the next twenty years. Typical, uh, general plans are broken down into topics, which they refer to as elements. Um, and so the state actually requires cities to adopt general plans with, with six required elements. And the city actually has adopted ten elements, um, so we actually have four that are optional. And so on the right you can see the ones that we've, that are required versus optional, just for your reference. And so, um, a lot of these elements were last updated in the eighties and nineties, so it's been several decades since they've been updated. And so now we're in the process of updating the elements and helping to shape the policies and goals as the city continues to evolve and prioritize where to, to set funding priorities. And so the, the open space conservation recreation elements are the ones specifically relevant to, uh, the Parks Department, and so we're leading these ones in conjunction with, uh, community development. And, um, and so it'll help to set, um, the priorities and, um, goals for, um, parks, natural resources, and recreation for the next several decades, and ultimately share, uh, capture a shared vision and, and inclusive future, um, for the city to continue to meet the needs in our parks and recreational spaces. So as part of this process, we have hired on a consultant, and we are in the initial phase of gathering information. And so as part of this process, we are gonna be mailing out a statistical valid survey. We are also, uh, community survey has just gone live, and then we are going to pop-up events to announce the, really, the kickoff of this planning effort, um, letting people know about the, the survey, and then, um, and then we will be hosting a community meeting in, on November twentieth. So at the pop-up events, I've been going, um, one of our former, uh, student commissioners will also join me, Kevin Brody, also volunteering at some of these events as well. And so we are just, uh, engaging with people around, like, what they're wanting to see, what they see as, um, uh, key element, key issues or opportunities in, within our parks. And then we will be, uh, as I mentioned, we will be hosting, uh, our first community meeting on November twentieth, um, at Pacific Community Center. So we will be posting flyers about that soon, and we're making a lot more, um, information known on our social media about these upcoming events. And then just also noting, we will be hosting, um, some focus group meetings, um, around this, uh, project as well. And then, um, so this is our fall effort, and as we go into winter, spring, there will, so we're just gathering information now, and then in the winter and spring, we'll be presenting the analysis and getting feedback. Um, I think in the spring then they'll actually release a draft, and then, um, we'll get feedback on the draft, and then in the summer, we'll revise the elements based on the feedback, and then, and then finalize that in the fall or winter, um, of next year. And so on the right you can see the Engage Glendale post, uh, flyers that we've been posting now, or we're gonna have it at all our community centers, and, um, it takes you to the survey, and then we've been updating glendaleplan.com to have this information as well. And then we will be launching a new website, um, the city will call Engage Glendale, and we'll have the information there as well, hopefully in the next month, that'll be live, and it'll be a better platform, I, we believe, to engage the community on, on our efforts, so. That's just, I wanted to let you guys know that this is, um, an ongoing effort, and we'll be providing, uh, the analysis presentation, um, as well to this commission in a few months.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah. Ready, John?
At eight C, we have the One Glendale After School Youth Sports Program, School Year Two Thousand Twenty-Four, Two Thousand Twenty-Five Annual Report.
Good afternoon, President Sardar Begians, and members of the commission, my name is John Malakian, Community Services Supervisor overseeing the One Glendale Sports Program, and I'm gonna give you guys the annual report, um, and I'll go ahead and get started. Um, One Glendale, uh, One Glendale After School Youth Sports Program launched in fiscal year twenty-five, uh, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, developed as part of the Community Needs Assessment conducted by three hospitals, our local hospitals. The Glendale Innovation Team created the cali, uh, the collaboration with GUSD. Originally, we had four schools participate in the inaugural season. Um, One Glendale is a well-awarded program. Uh, the Golden Bell Award here includes efforts to implement community school strategies to provide holistic supports for academics, physical and mental health, and support of student success. So, and we also got in two thousand seventeen the Henry Reining Award, uh, for Outstanding Organization Award. It's presented to an organization whose accomplishments have significantly contributed to good government or improved quality of life. Description of the program, the program is for fourth and fifth graders at eight GUSD elementary schools. Thirty students are selected each student, uh, each season by school principals, administration, and teachers based on attendance, behavior, and grades. We have a lot of kids that want to participate in the program, but we make sure that the kids that are actually participating are well-deserving, and we try to flip the kids every season, so we don't want them to do more than one or two seasons in the program. Uh, we'd like to have a fresh group of thirty, thirty kids coming out every single time. Let me tell you what those schools are. We have Cerritos, Columbus, Edison, Jefferson, Mann, Marshall, Muir, and Artie White. Uh, the four sports that we have are flag football in the fall, which we just wrapped up on Friday night, volleyball in the winter, um, basketball in the spring, we do two sports in the spring, we do basketball and soccer, we try to keep it, basketball and March Madness, flag football during flag football season, so the kids are really, really connected to that sport, they get a chance to watch it, they play it, they come with their sleeves, they got the whole thing, they got their gloves, so they're amped up. The program operates daily, Monday through Thursday, from school dismissal till five. At the end of each program day, students gather at their designated locations. Uh, city provides participants with game day uniforms, we got brand-new uniforms this year, we changed it up a little bit, so it looks really cool, you can see the picture on the top, um, it's really bright and energetic for the kids, they, they love it. Um, at least once a week, students will play versus another school. Students are transported to the games, uh, to the venues with buses that we provide back and forth. Um, and game, game venues are normally at Pacific, but during volleyball season, we use Maple Park as well, because you can only have one full court at a time for volleyball, it's the one sport where we use another facility. Um, during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, a duplicated total of eight hundred and four students participated in this program. Just think about that, eight hundred kids, um, and it continues to grow, the numbers. Flag football is the one season where we're, we're still trying to get kids super interested, but as we register for volleyball, we're almost at full capacity already, we have about twenty-five kids at every school site. Uh, we have our GO program. Uh, it's an outdoor nature program where we collaborate with our nature group, uh, and the Glendale Parks Open Space Foundation. One Glendale ASYSP administers the GO program. During FY twenty-four, twenty-five, we had a hundred and eight kids, student participate in GO excursion sold at Duke. Um, they do so many different things at the, on the field trips. Um, activities include guided hikes, environmental education, group exercises, and reflective creative projects. As you can see, some of the projects there, they are with the snake there on the ground, getting an opportunity to put their hands on, and going on nights, hikes during the day, there was one nice cloudy one where they really enjoyed that as well. Okay, and then we do sports excursions with the kids. Um, on October fifth, twenty twenty-four, forty-six students attended a live football game between GCC and West Los Angeles. GCC is a great partner for this program, it's close, um, they don't charge us any fees, so we get to take the kids. And one of the seasons, the one before this, we actually got to go to a GCC basketball game, uh, with head coach Vikan Jalesian, who I know pretty well, who allowed us to go into the basketball back gym. Uh, they got a chance to get on the court and meet both players from GCC and San Fernando, San Bernardino College. So, uh, but the GCLA game is a highlight, um, UCLA has a great team, so it's nice to see them being such a competitive environment, um, and my staff really enjoy it too, so it's definitely a major perk to the program. Um, we have a health and nutrition, nutrition component. One Glendale partners with Verdugo Hills Hospital for Nutrition Education and BMI's Body Mass Index Checks, which I'll go into further detail here in a bit. Uh, USC VHS staff visits each school site once, once, once a season to provide nutrition classes, uh, encouraging participants to make healthy snack choices. Uh, the young lady on the right, her name is Meg, she's a dietitian at Verdugo Hills Hospital, uh, and she's doing nutrition edu, uh, education here on the, on the, the second picture. Uh, she's really lo, lovely and wonderful, uh, she does it all voluntarily, uh, they charge us nothing. She gets to know the kids, they know her, it's not such a harsh experiment, and it's turning out to be something even parents are really excited about. Um, we do something, uh, called agility tests, where we just wanna see if the kids are improving their ability to move laterally, forward, sideways, all the ways that we want them to operate during games. Um, I'll go into further detail about this as well, but we do a three-cone shuffle drill, five zero five, which is how they're running their course, and then for, the four-corner agility test. And again, these are some of the new unis, looking really cool. Do you guys want me to go into detail for that agility test, or you guys are okay just knowing they're sliding around, stretching it out?
We're okay.
All right? All right, and then our championship evenings, which are the highlight of every season. Honestly, my favorite part of supervising this program is getting to do what I'm doing here in the corner right here, introducing these kids, we got the sparklers going, this year we incorporated some spirit flags. We have a smoke machine behind them, so you see it be a little bit hazy, we wanna give them that experience of this is their night. Um, and parents love it, I don't know if you, you can't see it, but along that whole walkway during that championship game, we had hundreds of parents trying to photo the kids, and I kept telling them there'll be time, but you can't stop them from having a good time, so we just kinda let it roll, and then everybody enjoys themselves. And again, there's a, there's the quarterback of the winning championship team from Muir there. Um, for the twenty-four, twenty-five season, we had four champions, flag football was Edison, volleyball was the Marshall Tigers, basketball Edison again, and soccer, we had the Columbus Eagles. Um, and we love the fact that all the schools get a chance to celebrate when we incorporate four schools, there's a consolation game as well, and those kids aren't pictured, but that's two other, other schools that are getting a pa, a chance to be a part of the big night, which includes the school superintendent, uh, sometimes the city manager, sometimes the director, parks, um, all of our staff come out, GUSD board members, our council members, so it's really a big night. Which one are we on here?
That's our mascot.
Am I going the wrong way?
You're going the wrong way, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, you went really wrong way.
Well, no, it's not letting me go back to, yeah. Can I go back to it? Okay, start flipping, all right? All right. Okay, um, One Glendale has many sponsors and contributors.
Hold on, John, the next slide where the mascot is.
It was an eagle.
Yeah, it was an eagle mascot, yeah, the school mascot.
Okay, so let me let you guys know, because it's not in the report. Right.
There's two of them.
So, so there's two eagles, there's two tigers, there's a Mustang, there's a bulldog, so sometimes I'll only get one tiger mascot. That tiger mascot's doing both schools. Fortunately, I was able to talk Jefferson into getting their own mascot and being unique to themselves, so during this championship, I had two tigers, they just looked completely different. The goal is to bring in sports professional teams and their mascots as well. We really pushed for Rampage with the, with the Rams, we got their cheerleaders, but Rampage was busy. All right.
I'm sure the boys are interested.
You know, we give it everything we got, and we, we hope that they show, it's all voluntary, we're not paying anyone to show up, so we get it if they don't, you know? Um, a little bit about the championship, it's more than just a game night, the department, uh, the city department's community organization set up booths, connecting families with youth valuable resources. Like I said, city leaders, schools officials, program partners proudly present medals, ribbons, trophies, honoring achievements of the players, and the evening wraps up with lots of great photos for families that are historic memorable moments of them. Flag football is not something every kid is playing, let's be honest. Volleyball's not something every kid is gonna get a chance to play, but in this program they do, and that's the best part. Again, some of our partners, Henrik, you can see there, with some of our fire folks. Uh, we had, after the fire in January of last year, we did a first responder celebration night. Um, so we gave our first responders plaques to celebrate them, and then we wanted the kids to put medals on the first responders, so that's what you see happening here. They got their medals, and then we had enough medals to flip that and have the kids do it for them too. Okay. Additional support, um, we're very closely connected to Hoover High School, I, I feel a strong bond to that school, and they allowed us to do a championship there, the basketball championship, and they provided us their pep squad, their cheer squad, um, for that big event now. That we also had our Edison Eagles dance team show up, which has grown, they had six kids, now they had forty at the last event. They had six kids, now they had 40 at the last event. And then we had the Horseman pep cheer team show up, which is again 50, 60 kids. So you can imagine, these young folks are also getting a chance to do this with the Rams cheerleaders, who are professional cheerleaders. So it's kind of like a full-circle moment for these young folks. They could professionally be a cheerleader, and they're getting to see that. Some of our program outcomes, again, now I'm going to talk to you about what some of those test results were. Every, in every drill, the kids improved by about, they cut time by about 34 point, 34 sec, 34 seconds. So, not 34 seconds, 7, 34 seconds, what did we say? 34%. So they're cutting their time just by simply doing the drills and working out every day. Now, it's not 100% across the board, but generally speaking, they're improving their speed, they're improving their ability to understand when to cut and move laterally. So it's a huge bonus when they get on the field or when they get on the court. The BMI results, this was our way of kind of seeing how the kids are doing with their fitness throughout the program, and most of the kids, 62% of the kids maintained under once, a little, around a one-second difference where they maintain their skill set. Nobody really decreased or increased heavy. So the program is working. They're staying fit, they're going out every day, and they're working out. So they're able to maintain a healthy weight. Obviously, we can't control if they're growing, so that also impacts the BMI, generally speaking. But this is very confidential to the program, but we thought we'd share, so you guys get an idea of some of the outcomes that we do have. We do a parent survey where we go around at almost any game that we can, and we ask parents about, are the kids drinking more water? Are they eating more fruits and vegetables? Are you seeing their academic performance get better? Are they communicating better? Because for us, the goal is during the games that they're positive, that they're high-fiving one another. So parents, as you can see, we're doing well in all categories, really well, and we're proud of that as well. Fiscal impact, we had a little bit of a fiscal issue for a few of our categories, but some of the years, we have more sports excursions, and we have other programs happening. We did a hoop bus a couple of years ago, so we end up using a little more staff time. We were coming off COVID in 23-24, and we really wanted to buffer the amount of staff we had in place to support the kids. So, yeah, it looks a little bit off, but generally speaking, it balanced itself out with the following year, and this year, we're on track to do things exactly the way they're supposed to be. And I wanted to play the One Glendale video for you. This is our annual wrap-up video here. Welcome to the One Glendale After-School Youth Sports Program, a powerful community partnership led by the City of Glendale's Community Services and Parks Department and the Glendale Unified School District. Designed to build self-esteem, teach leadership, and promote positive classroom behavior, One Glendale provides structured after-school sports and mentorship for elementary school youth. The program serves eight Glendale Unified School District elementary schools, where each school selects 30 fourth and fifth grade students to participate in one of four seasonal sports. Flag football in the fall, volleyball in the winter, and both basketball and soccer in the spring. Each season runs for eight weeks, focusing on skill-building, teamwork, and character development. One Glendale is proud to operate as a coed league, ensuring all students have equal opportunities to play, grow, and succeed. In the 2024-2025 school year alone, the program impacted over 800 students, giving them a safe and enriching space to thrive after school. The program is made possible through strong partnerships with the Glendale Unified School District, Glendale Community College, Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation, Glendale Police and Fire Departments, Pacific Park Library, and Verdugo Hills Hospital, all united by a shared commitment to youth development and community well-being. Together, we are more than just a team. We are One Glendale. Any questions?
Go ahead, Eric.
Not a question, but a comment. I think this is an amazing opportunity for everyone. I myself was participating in this when I was in Columbus, which was like...
Oh, yay. It's 10 years old. We have, it started in 2015.
Five years ago.
Oh, you're old.
Yeah, and this really does help with confidence. I can say firsthand that it helps us with our maneuverability in life, not just on the field, and I think that this is a really enriching experience that you're offering.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Yes.
I just have a clarifying question. The elementary schools that do participate, is it like open to all within the district and they just choose to voluntarily participate, or is it only for them?
It's only for the eight schools.
Okay.
Yeah, it is a costly program. So we're always talking about expansion, but generally speaking, we're at eight schools right now. And again, that's 30 kids per school site. You're at 240 per season. You know, at max level, you'd be, you'd be somewhere around 1,000 kids if everybody signs up for every sport to capacity. A lot of kids served.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah.
For the selection processes, are you going based off students who, because I read one of them was like attendance, are they usually selected for being, you know, in the top percentage of their performance, or are they also open to those who they might not be academically advancing, but sports may be their forte? Then, so are they considered for this program?
Yeah, and again, it's funny, because I got a call from a principal yesterday wanting to be like, hey, I have this kid who's not doing great in class, but I think he could really use the program. So, yeah, we're wide open with that. We changed it a while back to make sure that my staff is not selecting players. I don't want to, I don't, I don't, I should, we shouldn't do that because we're not seeing them every day all the time. The teachers are, to be completely honest, the principals, the school administrators, the counselors. So they pick the kids, so we take them interest forms. Those interest forms then get returned to us, and then we put them into the system that way. But we opened the door. I do a lot of mentoring. I'll go to school sites if a kid is struggling, and I see it on the field, I'll make a phone call to the principal. They're probably struggling in class, too. So it's not just a sports program. It's a mentorship program. We take great pride in any kid struggling with anything that we see. If I see a kid wearing the same clothes every day, if we notice something like they're double-snacking, the school will tell us. We talk to the families. We'll see if we can support, because I oversee the Youth and Family Services section as well. So there's always ways to help beyond just the sports. But the sports is the ultimate move because they're bonding, they're growing, and they're developing. And it's eight weeks. It goes by really quick. Like, we just closed one. Kids are practicing volleyball right now, and in a week, they'll have games, and off we go onto something brand-new, and that's the exciting part. It never gets stagnant. Yeah.
One more question is, with the, some of the refugees that the City of Glendale has housed for two different wars.
You said refugees.
Refugees, yes. Is your program doing specific curriculum for refugees, because they deal with different kinds of trauma and language barriers sometimes?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, we deny no one, and we're close.
And I understand that. I'm just wondering if there is special trainings or, I understand that you're very encompassing.
Yes, there are. We do touch on language barriers during our trainings during the week. We bring in the Glendale Unified School District. I have a close contact with Equity, Access, and Engagement, whoever sees that refugee program. So if they advise me, hey, this young folks, you know, these young folks could use it to be able to improve their language skills, we'll talk to the principals, and we'll make that work. We've never, we've never turned a kid away that really needs it. But refugees in general, we want them to experience here-now sports, because like at flag football, that's not happening in most places.
I understand. And before, another comment is, thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Sports are crucial for various, you know, parts of your life. As you know, they end up being the better employee. It's not better, but they, they perform well because of their sports background, academically, socially, as a friend. My other question is, with the World Cup coming, and it's coming sooner than, you know, earlier than the other big events, are there any programs to include these kids for the World Cup? Because I know, again, it depends, it's a budgetary, but if, for example, if you invite them to train in Glendale, maybe they can play with the kids or...
Yeah, that'd be amazing. And you know, when we talk about sports excursions, if, if we were somehow to make that fit, we'd love to do that. I'd love to do that. But ultimately, it's a small amount of time for each season, so you have to make the field trips, the wilderness trips, they all have to fit into that, and not one week apart. You want to be able to build 30, 40, 50 kids going, so you can't have it one week and the following be the next thing. The kids will get all confused about what they're going to. So if there was an opportunity, or if, you know, senior staff say, hey, John, this is happening, you, I'm always open to it. Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
President Sardar Begen, Commissioner Rostomein, with the World Cup coming in 2026, by the time those games start in the Los Angeles area, these kids will be out of school, and by the time they return into school, World Cup would be over by then. So that's something to consider as well. Same with the Olympics in 2028. We are trying to see how the city could partner with either one of those two big sporting events with the LA Sports and Entertainment Commission, but unfortunately, nothing has been determined or clear or what our roles would be. But we are looking into opportunities to bring some sort of activity into our city as well, and once we know what those are, we could try to make those opportunities available to our One Glendale participants. That would be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for them. Absolutely.
For us, yeah. Thank you.
And I want to let you all know, I want you guys to come to the championships and check it out. I know Henrik comes. He's such a great supporter. It's nice having you all there. January 23rd, 2026 will be the volleyball championship. Please make note, try to come, pass out some medals, hang out with these kids, high-five them. They really do appreciate it, seeing folks, you know, that are interested. Like, when the police officer show up and the firefighter show up, it's such a wonderful moment for them. So keep it in mind, try to make it, participate, have a good time. We'd love to see you there, for sure.
Great. Thank you.
I'd like to say that with nowadays, a lot of people are using their phones, and they don't get really the opportunity to go outdoors a lot. So I think this is an especially crucial thing that you're doing here, because a lot of kids that are at home and on their phones, they don't develop those fine motor skills, and they don't develop those communication skills that they would otherwise. And I believe that this program does a really good quality job with them, and I commend you for that.
Eric, thank you. I'm sorry, Commissioner Zarukian.
I also had a similar question to Commissioner Rostomein. I wanted to ask if you had a statistic of the amount of, like, ELD students who are part of the program, because I know personally someone who joined the volleyball team, and after doing that, he was able to kind of immerse himself within our community more and feel like a part of our community after immigrating. So I was wondering if you had a specific statistic.
For English language? I'm sorry, what did you say? English, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of English learners in the program. I mean, it's, we're getting a lot of Ukrainian refugees. We get a lot of Armenian refugees. And so our goal is to have a Spanish speaker, an Armenian speaker, a Russian speaker available to all the kids. Yes, we definitely take them, and we make sure that we communicate with them properly, even if that means that we have to stop practicing and pull them all to the side and explain to them what's going on, and then they do the drill. But we don't want them to feel like they're being left out in any way. I personally find a lot of joy in the program and seeing all the kids have a good time. So it's nice.
I think that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Before we close it, I have to, I have to give you, you know, your props. First of all, I love sports. I still play sports, even though I'm really old, Eric.
He's not. You guys, he's a very good, very good player. I've lost many games to Henrik on a basketball court. Don't let him fool you.
So with that being said, I think sports is a really, really good way of, A, building someone's self-esteem, and then also connecting that with their scholastic, you know, options, and making sure that, you know, positive habits that they learn from sports, you know, moves over to scholastically. And there's been, you know, obviously, I don't have anything with me right now, but there's been study after study about how sports changes people's trajectory long-term and, you know, how, how you could take a troubled kid and turn them into a successful human being and a member of community. So first of all, I think it's an amazing job you're doing when it comes to that. I personally also had the chance to be at a number of the championships and stuff, and I think that you personally go out of your way to give them a very different experience. These parents really, really look at, and for most, you know, I have two boys that are involved in two separate sports and travel teams and all that stuff, and it's very, very costly. So I think that you're opening up an opportunity for a lot of people, kids that do not have that opportunity, no matter how much their parents would want to get them involved in that. And the fact that, you know, again, some of the things you, you put on for the championship games and stuff, it's beyond exciting for these parents, and more importantly, the kids. But I think you're lighting a small spark in some of these kids that could potentially take a sport, go and, you know, practice outside, get better in it, and hopefully, one day, potentially earn a scholarship to a college somewhere, or even, you know, put a, build something where they're adding something to their resume that might assist them in getting into college. And lastly, something I want to kind of, you know, talk to the rest of the commission about, John, John actually does, has invited me to go speak to students, troubled kids, mentoring programs. And I have to say that, you know, some of these kids realistically, being without the sports programs, without some of these mentoring programs, you know, I would, I would have to, especially in today's society, I would give them a lifespan of a very, very low amount. And I think that, you know, you giving these kids an opportunity to hope to meet regular people that have grown up in the city that can take a sport or, you know, something that they've learned being immigrants, how they've fought through all the stuff to, you know, eventually lead to a more positive life and something that contributes to society. I think you've done an excellent job in all of our programs, you know, starting from the parks with, you know, someone, a leader like Onik. Programs always need a fallback person who is strong, who embodies the community that they're part of. So I think, John, you've done an excellent job in all, everything that I've seen that you've had a hand in, it's always been, you know, at 100%. You don't go 50, 60%. You're always giving it your all, and I think that part of the reason we're getting these numbers, you know, with the BMI, with the parents being so happy, is all because you're going all out, you're doing all of it. So I commend you for it. I love the programs. I love all of it, but mostly, I love the fact that you've really dedicated your life, especially to that sect, that, you know, that, because before these kids enter high school, they need to straighten up, or else, you know, high school is a, is a big mess for them. So good job on that. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Sardar Begen, thank you. And I do enjoy my job. It's wonderful what I get to do every day. Most people, I love what I do. So that changes the way you approach work.
It shows.
It's not, you don't work if you love what you do. So thank you.
Eric, did you?
Yeah, I had something to add. I can't stop asking.
Ask me, Eric.
Okay, so this program is especially enlightening to kids who, as he said, are undeserved and come from less privileged backgrounds, and this helps those families out, really, and it also helps those kids who never thought sports was possible. They weren't into sports, or for some reason, they never looked at sports as a profession. So, yeah, I want to echo that a bit, and I think you're doing a fantastic job with that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item, 8D is Recreation and Community Services Section Monthly Activity Report for September 2025. We do have a presentation prepared if you'd like to go through it. Otherwise, if you would like to skip the presentation, if you have any questions, we're happy to[1659.84] if you have any questions, we're happy to answer. I leave it up to you.
I will leave it up to, I think we're okay with skipping it, but I don't want to. You've, you've put in time and effort, so.
Can we do this? Can you pick the one item that you're like, oh my gosh, you guys got to hear about this. This is absolutely wonderful. Don't leave without knowing that this happened.
Sebag, why don't you talk about the future events coming up?
Yeah, so why don't we flip to that? While she's getting it up on screen, I could already tell you the next upcoming event is this Saturday. It's actually Friday night, T Night Out at Pacific Community Center, and we have our Friday Night Lights at the Verdugo Skate Park, October twenty-fourth at five thirty. Did we go too far? We've got a presentation on Friday, October twenty-four as well, Cooking with Native Plants, and Wonder the Wilderness Bus will be there on Saturday. We've got two events on Sa, multiple events on Saturday, so bear with me here. We have a really important event. It's Sound the Alarm. This is in partnership with Glendale Fire Department and the American Red Cross. This is going to start at the recreation center, but members and volunteers of the American Red Cross will be going out to our local community and installing free smoke detectors or replacing batteries to people, for people who have a smoke detector that aren't sure or whatever the case may be. Totally no charge to the person. That's a big event that we've been marketing for the last couple of weeks, a couple of months. We have our Fall Festival, our Free Pumpkin Giveaway escapade at Pacific Community Center. That's from eleven to two. Thanks to our sponsors, Super King Markets, who donated thirteen or fourteen of the pallets of pumpkins that we're picking up, Magic Jump Rentals, who's donating the jumpers for that event. This event's going to be huge, because the Children's Entrepreneur Market has fifty booths that have sold out, and we've got Plate of Progress adding sensory games to the event. Then the following week, we've got our Glendale Health Festival, also at Pacific Community Center setup will be on October thirty-first. The event will take place nine to four on Saturday, November first at Pacific. Free dental clinic, free vision test, free glasses, in addition to a bunch of other resources. All no charge to the participant. We don't, they don't check income, they don't check status, they check nothing. You show up, you make a reservation, you make an appointment, and you come get those services. That's in partnership with the Armenian Medical Society, Armenian American Medical Society, and Armenian Nurses Association and various other program partners. We've got Riverwalk Work Day coming up on October eleven and then November eight. Sorry, getting thrown off here. And we've got our GO Community Program taking place on November eight as well. We have an expongement clinic coming up at Pacific Community Center on November eight, I want to say as well for that one, and that is in part, November fifteen, sorry, I can't read it. Cut too small for me. And that's in partnership with the Armenian Bar Association. No walk-ins appointments only, but if anybody's got a record or juvenile record or anything like that, they're encouraged to bring their docs and make an appointment and show up and meet with the lawyers, no charge, and see how they could get those files expunged. We've got Healing Art of Shiatsu at the Shosian Whispering Time Pine Tea House, and that concludes it until our next commission meeting. Lot of good stuff happening in the next couple of weeks. Lot of special events. So we'll see you guys out there, maybe this Saturday.
Thank you. And I believe we're on the last item.
Last item is eight E, Park Services Section Monthly Activity Report for August twenty twenty-five. The report was in the packet. There is no presentation, so if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer. Otherwise, that is the last report.
Anyone else have questions?
With that, I think we had a wonderful meeting, and we are concluding the today's Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission meeting at five oh four PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Adjourned. Yes.